Oh.
On the website.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it should be actually good. Probably fix my place.
A year and a half.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the first Tiburon Town Council meeting of the year. May we have call to order and roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Nick Farr is absent. Councilmember Thier?
Present.
Councilmember Wellner?
Here.
Councilmember Nick Farr is here.
Thank you. Councilmember Nick Farr is here. Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
And Mayor Fredericks?
I'm here too.
Thank you.
Thank you. We move to open time. This is the time for people wishing to address the council on subjects that are not on the agenda. May do so. Please note, the council is not able to undertake an extensive discussion or action of items not on the agenda. If you have something on the agenda to speak to, wait till it comes up on the agenda. Matters requiring action will be referred to the appropriate commission board or committee or staff of or placed on a future meeting agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Are there any comments from the public? I am seeing none. Are there comments from the public? Open time, three minutes? Come join us.
You're sit down?
You could stand, but make sure the mic picks up what you have to say.
Okay. I came a couple of months ago and I brought up the topic that I would like to have a committee formed to discuss the accountability for, you know, smoking in apartments and units that have shared walls.
Will you share your name with us, please?
Barbara Warren.
Thank you, Barbara.
So, so many details we don't have time for, but nobody is taking accountability for enforcement. And it's a nightmare for people that have to live with that smoke. And they can't get help from their policemen. They can't get help from their management or the ownership. And I think that it has to go back to the owners of those properties that are not built correctly, that need sealing, need something to help with that smoke. Because it's left up to the tenants and the tenants don't have any power. So, nothing happens. The landlords go home. The police leave and you're stuck with not only burning incense, but marijuana, vaping and cigarette smoke when you live in shared with shared walls. And there's nothing you can do. If you complain more than once or twice, then you become the problem. So, I think we need some more help with enforcement with that, with the no smoking ordinance that we have because it's not enforced.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Is there any further comment from the public for items that are not on the agenda?
I have one, if I may. It's just a request, Madam Mayor, that on a future agenda, we discuss reconstituting the DITF format. We talked about it in the DITF, but I think we should talk about it at council. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council? I am seeing none.
We just, one other one. Two things, actually. We wanted to ask that the strategic plan be put on the agenda from the DITF on the next agenda, February 7th. And then, totally separate item is, I actually had someone fill out a registration to vote application. And I think many of you know that I'm a past president of the League of Women Voters of San Francisco. And the person who filled it out was actually my son. So now, I'm gonna actually have to try to get him to vote for me. So, I thought you would all enjoy that, but now he can actually vote. So.
And, and so, even though we don't discuss it, the item you requested is already on the agenda for the next meeting.
Oh, great. I didn't know that. So, thanks. That's fantastic.
We'll move on. I have one item. And that is, the town council's policy documents are in a second subcommittee and I hope we will cough them up and get them on the agenda soon. Yeah. Moving on, yes.
That committee actually just spoke about a meeting. So, you are right on time. Our great minds think alike, Alice.
Okay. Let's see. Have we skipped participation directions from the clerk?
Yes, I'm happy to give them now.
I apologize. Go ahead.
If you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you would like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're calling in using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Thank you.
So, is there any member of the public phoning in or remote?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. We move now to the consent calendar. Would anyone in the public like to remove anything from the consent calendar? I'm seeing none. Back to the council. Would anyone on the council like to remove any items from the consent calendar? All right, I will.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, we should check on Zoom to make sure no one wants to remove anything off the consent calendar.
Please check remote participants.
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Thank you. So I bring it back to the council for me, motion.
So moved.
And a second.
And a second. Thank you. Let's see, how do we do this? Any opposed or do we just do all in favor? All in favor.
Aye.
Moving on to action items, the first action item is a recommendation from Heritage and Art. Are we getting a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, first let me check that you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Very briefly from staff and unfortunately, as you know, as you can see, I'm on Zoom. And perhaps the clerk could let me know if, is there anyone from the Heritage Arts Commission present to provide information?
It appears not.
Okay, so let me give you a brief summary then. The Heritage and Arts Commission is proposing a Sorry. Hopefully that's not me. The Heritage and Arts Commission is proposing a one-day event. I'm called Landscape. A piano event, an outdoor piano event where a grand piano was brought in. And a performance is given and folks can enjoy the performance by being near the grand piano. But also, an added feature is the ability to procure a set of wireless headphones that allows, that would allow you to also walk around, walk away from the piano and still enjoy the music while you were taking a walk along Shoreline Park or in the vicinity of where the performance is. They're proposing to partner with an organization from Oregon, I believe called In a Landscape. That's done many of these performances. The staff report includes exhibits, annual reports from the organization, also a website link for the organization. The Heritage and Arts Commission is proposing that they spend $6,000 from the Public Art Reserve Fund. And they are asking council to both approve the date and location of the project today and also an expenditure from the fund. I was anticipating somebody from Heritage Arts to be here this evening, but I'd be happy to try to answer any other questions a council may have.
Does council have any more questions?
I do have one. So, in the, in the agreement, it talks about them selling tickets for the event. And I just, I'm assuming that any ticket revenue doesn't go to offset the $6,000, but at the same time, we're also not on the hook if we don't meet any ticket minimums or anything. That's just extreme.
Right. I think the tickets, I believe the cost for the event is to rent them the headphones. I don't believe there'll be any cost if you just want to walk up and, does that answer your question? I'm not sure if that.
Well, I just want to make sure that the contribution, like, we're not going to be required to contribute more if we don't sell a minimum number of tickets, for example.
No, so my understanding is no, that the $6,000 contribution proposed in the staff report is the maximum amount that would be needed from the reserve fund. And it could be less depending on fundraising efforts between now and when the event would occur.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I just had a question as to the location.
So I believe the location where the piano would be set up would be at the, I think it would be considered the southwestern side of McEgney Green, closest to the water. So basically, as you walk into McEgney Green and take the gravel road that's by the water, it would be on that edge of McEgney Green, basically at the very end of McEgney, right before you start to go around what we call South Mall.
Any further questions from the council? I just have, yes.
Yeah, is any portion of this going to be amplified music?
No, the, the piano.
It's all on headphones.
Well, the piano will be set up physically in that location, so you will be able to hear the acoustic music from the piano, but there will be no amplification on site. The only way you'll be able to hear it. And the only other way you'd be able to hear it is renting a pair of the wireless headphones.
Any further questions? I just have one. Are there any costs to the town that we wouldn't otherwise have, like, for instance, insurance?
No, the, the agreement that we would enter into with the vendor would have insurance requirements that would be included in the $6,000 cost, basically.
Thank you. This looks like a very innovative art project. And with respect to Councilmember Nick Farr's comments, I think it's just very thoughtfully designed for minimum impact on surrounding neighbors, which all of us always appreciate. With that, are there any public making comments?
I have a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay. I don't know if anyone else does, but I actually just wanted to say, I really love this idea. I like the idea of combining music and nature and having it be a system so that people can stay right by the piano. Or if they decide to rent a headset, they can also have that option as well. Once again, I just want to commend the Heritage and Arts Commission for kind of some innovative thinking and having some, a different art form that our residents can enjoy. So I would like to move to approve.
We need to do public comment before we do anything further.
Do we have any comment from the public here in the room? I'm seeing none. Do we have any remote comments?
Seeing none.
With that, I will entertain a motion to approve this project.
So moved.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We move now to action item three, Town Council Committee Appointments. And we will be considering any changes for 2024. Is there a staff report? Or are you looking at me because I skipped something?
I, you skipped action item number two. I'm happy to go on to number three, but.
No, no. I apologize, David. I, we have to recognize all the great work you do for us. This is, and this is the transportation and infrastructure study that we're all pretty excited about. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council members. This evening, we will be proposing to move forward a request for proposal for a citywide transportation and infrastructure study, primarily focusing on Tiburon Boulevard and the surroundings. Okay, so the recommendations we are seeking this evening is to approve as to form the draft request that we'll be discussing and direct staff to release the RFP for consideration by potential respondents and/or also provide feedback, additional feedback for staff to revise the RFP and then advertise. So back on December 6th, last month, December 6, 2023, we had a discussion topic here. And that discussion was a proposed scope of work for a request for proposal related to traffic study on Tiburon Boulevard. And council directed staff to go back and prepare an RFP and come back to town council for review. And at that point, either approve as form or make some revisions to it and then advertise this RFP. So the transportation network infrastructure that we are requesting to be analyzed will include Tiburon Boulevard from Blackfield Drive to Beach Road, Trussell Glen Boulevard between Tiburon Boulevard and Paradise Drive. All of Paradise Drive from Main Street circling back down to Trussell Glen Boulevard. Traffic patterns around Reed Elementary School, Bel Air Elementary School, Delmar Middle School, St. Hillary's School during peak drop-off and pickup times. And I do want to note in this presentation, we do have some, some of the text in there in red that is based on some correspondences that the, correspondence that the town received from residents. And we went through that and made some additions that we'd like to include in the RFP. We'd also like to see them look at potential effects of additional crosswalks associated with signaling infrastructure at intersections along Tiburon Boulevard. And one of the examples is how we've received some requests to put in a crosswalk or some type of hybrid Hawk Beacon there at Gil Martin. So we'd like them to analyze that as well, what the effects would be on Tiburon Boulevard if that was added. We also, Caltrans is working on the 2020 shop paving project along Tiburon Boulevard. And that will include Class 1, 2, and 4 bike lanes on Tiburon Boulevard from Trussell Glen to Highway 101. So we'd like this consultant to also analyze the effects of adding these bike lanes, what it would do to traffic along this corridor. And then last, the effects of traffic on the town's transportation network with the increased housing development as contemplated in the most recent housing elements for both town of Tiburon and the city of Belvidere. So this RFPs will be broken down into two different phases. Phase one is basically the data information collection phase. This phase will include a collection of baseline transportation data that we have. The proposals will include detailed descriptions of the quantity and the type of data the firm proposes to collect. In addition, it is expected that the firm will review all of our town standards, all of our procedures, plans, and any previous traffic studies that the town has conducted and incorporate that information into their report. And the information reviewed shall include, but not limited to the following that we have, the 2016 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, the new approved and adopted 2040 Town of Tiburon General Plan, all the existing timing and route information for all modes of public transportation along Tiburon Boulevard, existing in timing and route information for all area school bus systems, existing designated on-street, off-street bicycle routes, the Caltrans 2020 shop paving project, the Caltrans and FHA guidelines and standards, current standards as required, any transportation authority of Marin studies and traffic counts that they've conducted, and also the 2013 community action to reduce traffic report, the CART report that we have from 2013. Now, phase two will incorporate all the results from phase one and develop a C-Cantrell action plan to address town traffic issues, which will include, but not limited to the following, proposed ways to reduce travel delays and lessen the impact on Tiburon Boulevard. It's also anticipated that these recommendations will be made related to proposed infrastructure changes as well as non-infrastructure modifications, like, for example, recommendations related to our mass and regional transit or school schedules. So it doesn't have to be just infrastructure, but also non-infrastructure recommendations. Analyze existing traffic signal and infrastructure and timing plans that Caltrans has in place and propose changes to those timing plans and/or infrastructure improvements as necessary. And then identify areas of congestion within 1,000 feet of each school and develop traffic management options and practices to minimize the impact of congestion during peak pickup, pickup and drop-off times of students. So the plan will also outline a proposed schedule and cost to phase all the recommendations over a five-year period so that we can develop a good five-year CIP plan for the recommendations and the actions necessary to implement these recommendations. As the financial impact for the study, so the fiscal year 2324 CIP budget includes funding in the annual pavement preservation program to cover the cost of the study with sources of the funds being the American Rescue Plan funds. And again, the recommendations we are seeking this evening from town council is to approve, ask to form the draft of the request for proposals and direct staff to release the RFP for consideration by potential respondents and/or provide additional feedback to staff to either advertise the RFP as directed and/or come back to council at their next meeting with the changes you are requesting. And with that, we are here for any questions.
Any questions from the council?
David, would it be possible for you to send an electronic copy of the 2013 traffic study?
Yes, we'll send a copy over to you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yes, I had a question. Can you talk a little bit about, once there's a draft of the findings, will, will you be bringing it back to council? And will there be an opportunity during the study to possibly add more items on?
Absolutely.
Based on what they found. Okay.
Yeah, yes, Vice Mayor. So we, in our proposal, we are requesting the consultant to report back to town council at least three times. So we anticipate them to come back and report at their 30%, at their 60, and their 95. And when we come back to award this RFP to a consultant, we will also ask for a small little contingency. Also, this way, if town council would like to add or remove any additional studies that they would like to tag on to the RFP, we'll have the funding in place.
Yes, John.
So, I didn't catch this in your, in your presentation. I'm wondering, is there an intended, is there already a process or can there be added a process by which comment and information can be sought from the public in the course of this study?
In that, we don't have any workshops in the RFP, but we can definitely add that if you'd like. It would just, you know, in the end, the price would just be a little higher.
Yeah, it seems to me that it would be pretty important to get, this, it's a good way of capturing ideas that might not be obvious to someone coming in from the outside.
Definitely, we can add workshops.
All right, so this is questions, not discussion. There's a fine line, but move forward.
Okay, you can cut me off, Ms. Mayor. If I, if I overstep. The other question I had was on the crosswalks. I noticed that you, in the RFP, it says about studying crosswalks. It mentions Gil Martin specifically. I think if we could also mention other ones that residents have brought up, like Stewart. Or perhaps you want to mention all crosswalks on Tiburon Boulevard. And then the public will know that we're looking at all of them.
Absolutely, Vice Mayor. We've had phone calls with residents requesting sidewalk or crosswalks across Tiburon Boulevard on some of the major four-lane section. And we can add those in there as well. This way, you know, we'll get expert report on what needs to happen and if it's even feasible or safe or possible.
Thank you. And, and just to pile on that, so I think back in 2013, there was a study on constructing a sidewalk from Gil Martin to the cross, to the traffic lights. It wasn't all that expensive, but there were other reasons that that was dropped. If that could be looked at again, maybe conditions have changed.
If, if you would like that, yes, we can, we can have that be as part of the scope as well to look at that because they will be looking at that intersection for a crosswalk and we can add, you know, potential sidewalks along Tiburon Boulevard who are feasible.
And, and the, and, and the constraints, for instance, would be a narrowing of the bike lanes. So, I'm sure the consultant will consider those things when they look at this. Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, any further questions from the council?
Yeah. Is it a question?
Question. You can package it as a question.
Okay, thank you. So here's my question. Would it be possible to analyze, you know, Destination Tiburon and myself, and now Councilmember Nick Farr is working on this idea of a shuttle, you know, for employees, for residents that just goes up and down Tiburon Boulevard? Could we add that in as something for them to look at? And I, I can help you with the language based on the Destination Tiburon presentation that happened.
That would be great. Yes, if you continue that, we can definitely add that in there as well.
All right. Any further discussion that can be framed as a question? I'm seeing none. Let's open it to the public. Is there any public comment?
Yeah. I'm Jane. I'm Jane Gill. I've worked as a transportation planner. I like the idea of double-decking Tiburon Boulevard, but short of that, I would consider in phase one that you also look at the safety data for different intersections and the accident rate. I think it's important to draw out the fact that it's a public road owned by Caltrans and the relationship between the town and Caltrans. And I guess the third thing I would say with regard to this, that it's really important as you go forward to kind of consider on Tiburon Boulevard, the signaling and the history of the signaling. And when Caltrans made changes to it, what changes they made. And shortly after, longitudinally, what the traffic impacts were. So I think in phase one, and I'm just looking at phase one, but I also appreciate Councilman Wiener's, Wellner's very much that you include the public in this. I think that's a really great idea because there'll be more behind it. So, thank you.
Any further, yes?
Well, I was noticing when I was driving down Tiburon Boulevard the other day, many days, that there's two areas that seem really dangerous, like it's bound to happen. One is the people coming out of the club there on Tiburon Boulevard, the tennis club, where they come out, they just, you know, they're trying to get out, they can't get out. And then all of a sudden, they just shoot across that street and I just hold my breath, they're not going to get hit. And then the other one is there's a driveway that goes down to Beach Road or goes down to the bike path. And there's some big houses down there. And there's a long driveway that comes up. They have to get out that way from Tiburon Boulevard, from their, that long driveway. And you can't see them coming around the corner. Those cars are coming around Tiburon Boulevard. They're coming around down, they're coming around really fast around that corner. And those people, they have children in. Down, they're coming around really fast around that corner and those people, they have children in the car, some of them. They're coming up and they can't see those cars. So it's just luck that they, I don't know why they don't crash. So I just thought, since you're doing that, I would bring that up. There's like two areas that are going to become. More and more dangerous as the traffic gets so heavy. People get frustrated and they just dart out, you know. So that's all. I just happened to notice. I didn't know you were doing this.
Thank you. Is there further public comment?
Good evening. Chuck Hornbrook, Tiburon. Thanks, everybody, for being here and I appreciate staff incorporating the public's comments on the RFP. One piece that I think that was missing, and I'd like to. Emphasize this is that while the schools and the focus on that is a contributing factor to traffic on Tiburon Boulevard. The schools are all out by three ten PM every day or earlier on Wednesdays. But yet the traffic on westbound Tiburon Boulevard. Is from three thirty until maybe five. For those of us who live on the eastern side of Tiburon Boulevard down at the end here and have to drive that. Is awful. It is the worst time to drive. And so there are other contributing factors which are not part of that study or spelled out specifically. And I think that would be great if somebody could add that on. And then also just on that data, there's some other bus data, and I think maybe that was in the presentation, but I think it would be great if you guys could include that. And just to give you this data and Mayor Fredericks was part of this meeting is that. Of the three schools, the public schools. Thirty-four percent of the students come by single car at Del Mar, forty-five percent at Bel Air and fifty-seven percent. At Reed, which kind of makes sense given the age demographics. On bus riding, though. Twenty-eight percent of the kids at Reed take the bus, twenty-four percent at Bel Air. And twenty-one percent at Del Mar and all the other things made up by car pools or walking and things like, or bicycle riding, right? And Del Mar is a high bicycle riding. So I think it's important to understand that we're doing pretty well. For the schools, there's other contributing factors. And finally, before my time, while I still have a minute, is. There is a other entity that contributes a lot of traffic, which is the city of Belvedere. And they're not here, they're not part of this discussion, and I think it's super critical that they're involved here. We're not, we don't operate in vacuums. We share a library, we share a rec center. We should share a lot of other services, in my opinion, but at a minimum. We should be talking with them, even having them potentially do a joint powers or whatever you want to do or continuing or bringing back the CART piece. But I think those things are missing from this. And finally, I didn't sense, see a sense of urgency on the RFP. This is a really big issue. This is bigger than. All the other items that we have, with the exception of maybe the housing that you guys had to grind through. This impacts everybody, particularly those of us who taxed ourselves for the Martha property, who lives south of Tressel Glen. This impacts us every day, and that's the people who live in Belvedere as well. We taxed ourselves to make that public. Parcel available to everybody. It would be great if the town of Tiburon. Help step up and figure out how to mitigate this thing quickly, not in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, but twenty twenty-four. Thank you for your time.
Can, can you give those statistics again about the numbers in single-family cars versus the bus?
Sure.
Where'd it come from, too?
Uh, this came, the data came from the Safe Routes to School. There was a meeting on September seventh, I believe. I can give the specific date. There's a presentation. Staff has a copy of that. But I'm happy, and I'm happy to, I put together a table to summarize it because it's on three separate pieces, so. I'll go back and get on the single cars by school. Going from best is, Del Mar is thirty-four percent, Bel Air is forty-five percent. And Reed is fifty-seven percent. That means at Del Mar, sixty-six percent of the kids. Walk, bike, take the school bus, use public transit. Or carpool, which is awesome, right? Sixty-six percent. That's, that's one of the highest numbers in the entire county of Marin. On the school buses, twenty-eight percent of the kids at Reed. Twenty-four percent at Bel Air and twenty-one percent at Del Mar. And I'm, I'll happily send this. Table that I'm reading off that I just summarized. And that just comes from Safe Routes to School and I'm, as part of post, I'm on that. Safe Routes to School piece, so that's why I have that data.
And you'll distribute it to us too, won't you, David? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's very helpful.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you as well.
Is there any further public comment?
Although I realize I am a Belvedere resident, do I, am I allowed to speak? Okay, sorry. My name.
Just, just the thought that you might not be allowed to crack me up. Public meeting, welcome.
Right, thank you. Um, my name's Amy Jacobs. I have been a parent, three kids. I've just actually finished through the district. Live in Belvedere, so deep down the peninsula. Also been on the Reed. Board, I've been on the Reed board and I've also been on the school bus committee. And thanks to Chuck, I was aware of this meeting, so I'm a little behind on it. I just wanted to share. Some things that I would maybe want covered in such a study. Based on the analysis I did when I was on the bus committee. I know the buses, the bus passes, they're usually full, you know, people buy them, but it's actually whether they use them. And I'm, I'm specifically focusing on Del Mar since it is in the middle of the town. And I think it, for that reason, it really impacts. Traffic, maybe even more. It's more. Parents are more apt to then pick up their kids. Because they're older and they've got activities. So I would like, love in the study if they actually say who's using the bus. One of the reasons why is personally, I think one of the solutions is if we could create to creatively. Design a bus system that goes both ways. So you're not just unlike a Reed student where you just want them to get on the bus so they can get home safe. They're old enough and they can take buses so that if they are going off the peninsula for sports programs or whatever, they can take the bus to Nugget. And what happens is, having been a parent of three Del Mar kids. It just, you don't use the bus because it's not practical and then you pick them up and then you're just one of those people on the road. Causing traffic. And two other issues, just quickly. I have noticed as a driver, when St. Hillary's is on and off, it's a big impact. And I know they used to have a bus. I'm now, my daughter goes to a private school in Town of Ross and, you know, there's. They work with the town and I just, I don't know, I'm, I'm sure St. Hillary's is, I don't know anything about it, but would be willing to work with the town and carpool situations and buses. And then finally, I, I don't know as much what's happening with bicycles and e-bikes. And I just know that my daughter used them responsibly in eighth grade. And it was fantastic and that independence. And I just, you know, was wondering, again, I heard maybe that they're not allowed, but you know, there could be ways to make them safer, right? Maybe you get a license, maybe it's, we have some enforcement on the bicycle paths so that you. Get a ticket or something if you go over, you, maybe we just say you can't ride someone on them, but to think that. A really incredible way to get yourself to school and many people live with hills and all that. To be taken away, I just think it costs the whole town. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment from people here? Any remote speakers?
Seeing none.
Uh, thank you. I'll bring it back to council for any further discussion and approval of staff recommendation.
I actually have another question. It's a quick one. So. Commissioner Hornbread brought up the issue of Belvedere. Is the traffic originating in Belvedere being studied? Also through this study, since it obviously impacts Tiburon Boulevard? Will the consultants be looking at Belvedere as well?
No, strictly, this is just Tiburon Boulevard and any of our, our, arterial and principal streets and. You know, the corridor from Beach to Blackfield only.
If I may, though, Madam Mayor.
Who's speaking?
Greg, online.
Oh, yes.
Greg.
Thank you. You know, I would note, though, you know, David is correct that. We don't necessarily look in Belvedere at what's going on, but we're certainly, this study will be capturing. All of the traffic that goes to and from Belvedere because it will be presumably. Doing traffic counts at the intersection of San Rafael Avenue and Tiburon Boulevard, as well as Beach Road and Tiburon Boulevard. And again, presumably Main Street and Tiburon Boulevard. So. I, I think it's fair to say that the volume of traffic that's going in and out of Belvedere will be captured in this work. We will not be looking specifically in Belvedere necessarily. Only where the traffic is going to and from on those three collector streets, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense and I have a follow-up recommendation. I think it would be a good idea if the consultant just has a conversation with Belvedere. Whoever, you know, David, you see fit, probably the planning director, whoever's in charge of transportation. Just to find out what information they have already gathered about what the traffic is coming in and out of Belvedere. I do think that that's important for, for a study of traffic on Tiburon Boulevard because. If you have fifty, I'm just making this up, fifty construction vehicles coming in every morning, you know. Right at the same time the school buses are going and people are trying to get children to school. That will obviously impact this study and it would be good to know the origin of, of that. Traffic and. You know, sometimes I know license plate studies are done. It's, it's pretty expensive. You know, to do that, but that's also a way of trying to figure out how many people are, you know, using Tiburon Boulevard. To commute to a job versus living here versus, you know, other things, but that's probably maybe. A more sophisticated and expensive study for the next time.
Any further comments from the council?
Yes. So generally speaking, I just want to say that I'm delighted that we're moving forward at this. Thank you. And I'm. Also. Appreciative and grateful that we have, this, this is, we're funding this through the federal money that we received. During the pandemic. And I can think of no better use for this chunk of money than, than this study to try and tackle this. Persistent and difficult problem. I do have two. Specific proposed edits for the RFP. The first one is. In the statement of the objective. Seeing. Trying to identify the page for you. Background and objective. I think I'd like to add. A little bit of. An additional phrase because. I want to make very clear what the objective of the study is and the, the language, while. I suppose technically accurate, it's a little indirect. Currently, it says the objective of this solicitation is to solicit a firm. To review and evaluate existing and future needs of the transportation network along State Route one thirty-one. Tressel Glen Boulevard and Paradise Drive within town limits. I would add to that. For clarification sake and to identify strategies to reduce congestion and improve movement along State Route one thirty-one. So that there's no question that. That's a primary goal of the study. My second. Proposed edit. Is a few paragraphs down. Let me identify the location of that, too. It's where it says existing conditions, phase one. In the second paragraph, I think it says the firm will identify and make recommendations on policies and procedures and implementation of traffic flow. And calming measures towards the general goals of reducing travel delays and congestion. And improving vehicular, bicycle and pedestrian flow and safety. I'd like to insert a sentence here with the idea being. This is a little bit along the lines of what my, my comment last time was. I want to make sure that the firm is not just looking at traditional measures, but is also just thinking. Creatively about this is the traffic situation and how we could impact it. So the sentence that I would propose me insert would be something along the lines of. And I can provide the text after, but it says. The firm will endeavor to consider innovative approaches to reducing traffic congestion. Including but not limited to the addition or modification of public transportation, methods of travel to local schools. And the location of crosswalks, bike lanes and parking facilities. Then it continues as a normal, which is additionally, the selected firm would be expected to attend up to three town council meetings. So, and I'm open to modifying that sentence. It's not, I'm not married to the specific language of it, but I'd like something in there. That emphasizes something beyond just kind of the normal traffic counts and mechanical processing of data. I'd like it to be. A process where we really think what is causing this traffic and how can we. Innovatively produce congestion.
Thank you. Greg, do you still have your hand up on purpose?
I do, yeah. No, first I want to say thank you. We heard a lot of great, you know, and the discussion's not over, but. There's been a lot of great suggestions tonight. I, I am going to suggest, though, that. You know, I didn't count them all, but I, I'm guessing. You know, David said we could add this, that, you know, probably any number of things, six, five or six things. I know speeds, I wouldn't say speed is of the essence. We all want to have this work done as quickly as possible. I think it would be wise. For when council finishes discussion today to direct staff to incorporate everything we heard today and bring it back one more time. I almost hate to do that, but. Things were moving pretty fast earlier in the meeting and I just want to make sure we capture accurately. Some of the great suggestions that we heard tonight. So that would just be my suggestion. And of course, we're, we're happy to try to nail it down tonight and finalize it. I just want to make sure we're, we're making everybody satisfied. With the product. It's more important to get it right, I think, at this point than to get it done tonight.
All right, so bring it back to council. Would anyone like to comment on the idea of bringing it back to council since some of the edits were extensive?
I, I have a question. Would creating a subcommittee speed things up versus bringing it back to council in two weeks where if the subcommittee were empowered to ensure. Any changes were correct tomorrow or the next day?
My personal opinion is that a subcommittee is not necessarily going to speed up the process. It's mostly a matter of capturing said at the council, but if it is the council's will to do that.
And second question is, could we make any changes or any changes we've talked about? As revisions to the RFP after the fact. So could we approve, approve the RFP as it is today? And make revisions to that at a later date so that it goes live?
You, you can do that technically, but it's going to slow down the process for receiving the bids because you're going to have to give the bidder, you know, the prospective folks more time. Once you issue the addendum to the RFP to respond.
So, so I would encourage us now just to make a motion. Do I see a hand up here to my left? Yes.
I didn't, I didn't get to make a general comment and I just wanted to say. That this, this RFP, you know, we, we decide on a lot of RFPs here. We get a lot of them. And this one has the true ability to impact every single resident of Tiburon. Traffic along Tiburon Boulevard for a very long time, I think, ever since I've been here, has been a huge. Issue and a quality of life issue for all of our residents. I think the last traffic study, when was it, David? Was it twenty thirteen? Right, it was in twenty thirteen. It's been ten years. So, you know, I want to say today, whether the, whether this RFP is, is voted out today or comes back to us once more. And I'm very excited that. The results of this research, I believe, will have a very positive impact on our residents and I wanted to commend. Our town manager and David for bringing this to us. I'm very excited.
Any further comments from the council?
I just want to say that irrespective of whether we continue it until the first meeting in February or we decide. Here and push the staff to effect the changes. I particularly like Councilmember Wellner's. His first edit in particular, because I feel like when you reframe the objective. And I don't want to be cavalier with the details, but it does put everything else into context, in particular in light of what Mr. Hornbrooke and Ms. Jacobs said, you know. At the end of the day, we just care about traffic and like, we don't necessarily care about the genesis of it. We just want to study it and make it better. The only thing I will say, and not to add more potential changes, but if we're going to get rid of anything in phase two. Wouldn't say I don't care about the traffic patterns around the school, but my primary, I think our focus should be traffic on Tiburon Boulevard and getting people in and out of town. And I feel like that is. And I feel like that is sort of a superfluous feature to this study. So I'm, I don't care if we don't do it, but that's, that's just me. Otherwise, I would say we just incorporate the edits, including adding public participation and direct staff to move forward with it today. I would support that.
Is that in motion?
I, I would make that as a motion, yes.
So I have, I have a couple of comments. Can we?
But, but that would be incorporating all the edits that were mentioned this evening by everyone.
Yes.
Okay.
So just, just a couple of things. One of them is, so class three bicycles were recently banned at Delmar Middle School. So I think it's, it's probably worth, worth noting that I think we're, there are a lot of those that are sort of cruising around town, and that's been a primary way that a lot of kids get to Delmar or have in the past, but that's no longer an option. So I think one, one thing for us to think about is, is how that's going to impact the, the bicycle traffic going to and from the middle school. A, a large chunk of, of the kids that were riding bikes to, to Delmar were using e-bikes. That's a recent change. So the, and the second thing is, I wanted to see if we could, if we could add some language around the, the crosswalks. I think I had asked about this last time, was I want to make sure we're, we're adding and looking at the effects of a full signal for some of the crosswalks in addition to the on-demand lighted crosswalks that we have currently. So there's a different dynamic to it. So a, a full signal can be timed. There, there are, it's, it's not necessarily going to be on demand for the pedestrian. It can be set up so that it, so that traffic is, is the number one sort of priority for that lighted signal, for a full signal versus what we have like at Stewart, which is you push the button, all traffic stops, pedestrian crosses, then traffic can go. So I think, I think we're, some of the language in here makes it look like we're going to look at just adding crosswalk, on-demand crosswalks, but I'd also like us to look at for Gil Martin, a full signal and whether that has a, maybe potentially a more positive impact on traffic versus one of the on-demand lighted crosswalks that we have currently. And then I think to sort of add on to, to Councilmember Wellner's suggestion, I think making sure the output is a very clear set of recommendations and, and making sure that, that we understand what projects the consultants have done that have, that have actually benefited or improved traffic situations in town. So I'd really like to understand from their recommendations in the past, what sort of actions and changes have happened that, and, and what the impact has been of those changes.
So, so let me ask something. Wasn't there some language about them being responsible for also reporting on possible impacts of any changes? That's already in?
In the RFP.
Yes. Okay. So we have a motion on the table. Are you making amendments to it, Isaac?
Amendments to the, to the motion that Jack just made?
Yes.
No.
All right, so we have a motion.
Do you need a second?
We need a second. And we now?
Okay, and to be clear, the motion is to have staff update the RFP and go forward with it without returning to the council.
All right, all in favor? We have a second? All in favor? There we go. All right, now we move on. And, and thank you. And, and the first I heard of this idea was actually from you, John. I think it's a really good idea. This has been an issue since I've been on the council. That's twenty years. And traffic has not gotten better.
Thank you, Alice.
Moving on to action item number three, committee appointments, town council committee appointments. Is there a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Members of the council are appointed to serve on a variety of local, regional boards and committees, and as a town representatives to a number of joint powers authorities. They also serve on town standing and ad hoc committees to study issues and projects in town. It's regular practice for the council to conduct an annual review of this committee appointments list at the first meeting of the year and make any changes needed or desired for the coming year. So the committee appointments list is attached as exhibit one to your staff report, and this will be your opportunity to make any changes for the year.
All right, bring it back to council. Any comments? All right, I'm not seeing any. I would just like to make a comment that I would like to withdraw as the voting delegate to the League of California Cities. I'm a little challenged to do all that traveling, so that is an open position if anyone is interested in it.
I'd be interested. I think I'm the alternate.
Yes, you are.
I am. How many, how much travel has it been, Alice?
Second.
It's been the regular meetings?
Yeah, the voting is at, at the regular meetings. There are other meetings to attend if you want to keep up what's going on in the other jurisdictions, but that's the one that you're committed to.
Yes.
And you're also committed usually to stay till the last day when they actually have the voting.
Okay. Yeah.
Is that a yes?
Yeah, that's a yes, and then now there's an alternate position that is vacant.
Okay, do we need to vote on, we don't need to vote, do we need to vote on that?
You can vote on the whole list at the end after we take public comment.
With, with the changes. All right, is anyone interested in being the alternate?
I'd be the alternate.
All right, that's Jack. All right, any other changes? All right, this is sort of tangential, but just as general information, I've served for many years on the League's Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Policy Committee. That's a nomination that comes through the North Bay Division of the League of California Cities. I just stepped down. If there's any interest in that, just let me know and I'll connect you up, not to get it, but to figure out how to be a candidate. All right, do we need to make a motion to?
Technically, we need to open public comment first before.
Is there any public comment on committee appointments? I'm seeing none. Is there any remote comment?
Seeing none.
No, you need to speak from the microphone. If you want to speak, you need to come up to the microphone.
I know.
Otherwise, it doesn't get recorded. If you don't speak in the microphone, it doesn't get recorded.
So I just didn't understand, you said, is there any public comment to committee, to appointments, to committees?
Yes.
And so I didn't know if you're talking about the committees you were just talking at, or are you talking about what I asked, if they would put together some type of committee for?
No, no, these are the formal appointments.
Okay, that's, I didn't understand. I didn't know. Okay, thanks.
It's fine. All right, so where are we on this? We have no public comment, and we now make a motion to approve the committee list with the changes that were offered here at the meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have any comments now on action item four? Is to, are there any questions about the town council meeting calendar? Holly, go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to ask that we also remove the July seventeenth meeting. It's been customary that we do not meet in July in order to allow town council members to go away and have a vacation. So I would ask that we cancel that one, yeah, July seventeenth.
It has not my, been my experience that we cancel formal meetings, except at the end of the year, the end, the beginning of the year.
And I think they started to get canceled in twenty twenty-one was the first one we canceled with a second meeting. Before that, we always had a, the second, we held the second meeting in July.
Um, so should we just leave it open?
I've been on for, um.
There's agendas and minutes online, you know, all of them.
Yeah.
Sometimes minute, minute, meetings get canceled when there's nothing to do, but it's always been scheduled.
So we could keep it open to cancel it if we can arrange the workload on the agenda rather than formally canceling it?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be asking to cancel it now, and the reason is, is that then it gives us the option to be able to purchase plane flights and to know with certainty that, you know, the meeting isn't being held. It might, Jack, it might have been on the official calendar at the beginning of the year, but it always gets canceled. So I guess I'm trying to just do it now.
But no, there's meeting, there's minutes and agendas of those meetings.
There have been meetings, Holly.
There's only a twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-three.
So, so there's always the option of just not making the meeting.
Okay, well, I guess I'll.
If you'd like to make a motion, and it carries.
I guess.
No, I'm, I'm looking at twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-one. There are no minutes for July.
That's what I said. So then those three years, all of July meetings were canceled. Before that, July, we had a second, we had the second regularly scheduled meeting. And then there's, sometimes there's one in August canceled, like it was kind of hit or miss.
Yeah.
But.
Well, twenty twenty, there might be a different reason why we had that meeting.
For sure. So I guess, I, I guess I would just move that we adopted.
Okay.
Without July seventeenth.
We need to take public comment?
Sorry, I jumped the gun. Sorry.
Is there any offline, is there any online comment, remote comment?
Seeing none.
All right. Further discussion? Motion?
Yeah, I have a comment. So October second, it's, it says cancel next to it for Rasha Shana. Could we move that date so that we still have two meetings in that month for October?
I, I would suggest we don't do it unless there's a need.
We can only schedule a special meeting if we have more business. Right.
Sometimes there's an opportunity to move agenda items on to skip a meeting, and sometimes there isn't.
So we're canceling the eighteenth and this, and October second, and July third, and January third, which we already canceled. And then Holly is proposing July seventeenth, we cancel also.
Right, that's the motion I made.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table to cancel July seventeenth. Is there a second?
Sure, second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Wow, me. Okay. Are there any other comments or changes to the calendar? That's it. So now do we need to, this, we just canceled July. Now we need a motion to approve?
The way I interpreted Councilmember Year's motion was approve the calendar with the addition of the amendment to delete the July meeting.
All right.
Approved for one.
That was it. And so that concludes action item three. Move out four. We now move to council reports. Any? I'm hearing none. Town manager reports?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right, now we adjourn to closed session.
And just to verify, there's no public comments for the closed session items before we go into closed session?
Are there any comments on closed session? Are there any remote comments on closed session?
Seeing none.
Then we adjourn to closed session. Okay.
Close session.
Yeah. I don't know what to do. Hey.